Welcome, everybody, to the opening of the March 15, 2010, regular meeting of the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners. I want to welcome everybody who's in the audience.
As well as everybody that is at home. At this point in time, I would ask everybody to stand for the presentation of colors by the Boy Scout Troop 83, Rocky River Press Training Church.
Post the collars. All that are available, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This time, I call on Reverend Randy Wall from Cold Springs United Methodist Church for the invocation.
Let us pray together. O gracious God, we gather here on the first Monday of daylight savings time, acknowledging that you, that despite what the clocks may say on the wall, that you are the one who is the giver of and author of time, that you are the beginning and the end. We ask your blessing upon those who gather here for this solemn assembly, for this meeting of our Board of County Commissioners tonight. We pray, oh God, that you will guide every decision that is made and everything that is said. Help our county commissioners this night and always, oh God, to keep their ears tuned, not only to the people, but keep their ears tuned to you. We pray these prayers in your name. Amen.
Now, if the young men from Boy Scout Troop 83 from Rocky River Press Training Church can come up, introduce yourself, and when you finish introducing yourself, each of you, if you'll step to your left to Commissioner Minna, she has a pen for you, but if you'll come to the microphone and introduce yourself.
My name is Ian Jenkins.
Where do you go to school?
I go to CC Griffin Middle School.
Okay, and what grade are you in?
I'm in sixth.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Matthew Files. I go to CC Griffin Middle School, and I am in seventh grade.
Thank you.
My name is James Murphy. I go to CC Griffin Middle School, and I'm in eighth grade.
My name is Matthew May. I go to Concord Middle. I'm in seventh grade.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all for coming tonight. We have before us the minutes that were passed out. Do we have any approval or, excuse me, do we have any corrections or amendments to those minutes?
Make the motion be approved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. The next matter is on page forty-four, which is the recognition of Deborah Gibbs with Donate Life North Carolina and Adopt a Proclamation. At this time, I would call on, excuse me, Mrs. Creighton to come forward and present the flag to us. This is a proclamation for the National Donate Life Month, and Commissioner, Vice Commissioner, Vice Chairman Commissioner Poole is coming down to accept it. If you could tell us a little bit about it.
Commissioner White, I'm Debbie Gibbs from Life Share, and I just wanted to introduce Myra and to thank all of the people from CMC Northeast, from our organization, who came, and the people from Cabarrus County, whose lives have been personally touched by donation. Would they, would you all please stand? Thank you. We had three people whose family members have received transplants. Myra is going to speak and actually present the flag. She's lived in Cabarrus County for thirty-six years, and unfortunately, she had to make a decision that no parent ever wants to make. Myra?
As a resident of Cabarrus County and as a mother of a little boy who died much too early, it is my honor to present to you this Donate Life flag to the Cabarrus County Commission. I hope when I see this flag, it will remind me of the hundred lives that my son Garrett has touched with his donation, and I hope that others who see this flag flying will inspire them to become donors as well. I have also brought with me some flower seed bookmarks that everyone in the room should have by now, as another reminder of the importance of being a life-saving donor. I hope that everyone will have this opportunity to make such an important decision. I know it has made a difference in my life as well as others. Thank you very much.
Real quick, I know many of us, if not the vast majority of the community, knows how to be an organ donor, but for those that may not know, what's the process and how do you become an organ donor? If someone could help us.
Well, you can sign up to be a donor at the DMV when you go to get your license renewed. You can also go online to donatelifenc.org and sign up that way. And for anyone who's here this evening that would like to, we also brought paper enrollment forms. We're good Girl Scouts, so we wanted to be prepared, but it really is a life-saving thing to consider, and right now, there are thirty-two hundred people in North Carolina that desperately need transplants and over a hundred and five thousand nationwide. So, on their behalf, thank you very much.
If you think that you're a donor on your license, how do you know that you're a donor or know that you're not a donor? What would indicate that?
Well, if you have a red heart on the bottom corner on the right side of your driver's license, that gives legal consent for a donation to take place. We still advise people to tell their family members that they have put the heart on their license, but if you have a heart, it is legally binding. There was a time in North Carolina that it was not, but it is now, and you can also affirm your wishes by signing up online.
Thank you very much. We have before us a proclamation. Commissioner Poole, would you like to read that out for the board?
And, and I want to take a moment to recognize my niece, who's here tonight that's not supposed to be, because she's supposed to be at home on bed rest, but my niece is Angie Ridenhour, and Angie's the one that came, and I think we were having Thanksgiving dinner, and said, "Do you think that the county commissioners would be willing to do something like this?" And I thought, "Yeah, I think I can actually do something about that." And a lot of people know Lynn Shue, who was on, used to be a member of the Board of Education. He is also, he's been a recipient, and so it's something that, that Ms. Minna and I, by being on the school board, were very familiar with, with having him with us on the school board when we were in that capacity. So, proclamation reads, "Whereas Life Share the Carolinas is focused on saving lives by increasing participation in the North Carolina Organ Eye and Tissue Donor Registry, and whereas April is observed as National Donate Life Month with unwavering support from the nation's donation and transplantation community, and whereas Life Share the Carolinas, the organ procurement organization that serves Cabarrus County, is a part of that community and has its own programs to highlight the importance of donating to save the lives of others, and whereas over three thousand North Carolina residents and one hundred and five thousand people nationwide are in need of life-saving transplants, and whereas residents of Cabarrus County have been touched by donation as recipients of life-saving transplants and as members of donor families who have literally given others a second chance at life, and whereas it is an honor and privilege to have some of those residents in attendance at the Board of Commissioners meeting of Cabarrus County to present the board with the Donate Life flag, now be it resolved, we, the members of the Cabarrus Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2010 to be National Donate Life Month in Cabarrus County, and urge our residents to give serious thought to the importance of eye, organ, and tissue donation, and if so desired, to join the North Carolina Donor Registry, and further to notify their family members that they have done so."
With that, do we have a motion to accept, motion to accept the proclamation?
So, move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. One thing we have not, that I've skipped over and I want to get back to is the agenda that we have before us. Is there anything that anybody wants to pull off, or is the agenda, as it's presented, ready to proceed on that? Everybody ready to go?
So, move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now, for informal public comments, which is limited to three minutes for each person. The first that we have is Mrs. Joyce Bost. Mrs. Bost, if you don't mind coming forward, and while you are coming forward, if each person would address where they live, I mean, their street address and city, then we will hear what you have to say. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joyce Boston. I am at 205 Vanderbilt Avenue, China Grove. I am also serving as president of the Board of the Enigville Volunteer Fire Department. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the emergency management effort of non-renewal of our fire protection contract with you, and just have a few points to make, and we do have others to follow that will probably be more detailed, but we were first notified of this meeting and the voting taking place that appeared in the Kannapolis Concord newspaper on Friday, March the fifth, and we believe that there was incorrect and very misleading information in the article. This is our first opportunity to respond to anyone in Cabarrus County about the impact that it will have. We have had no formal meeting with anyone from Cabarrus County stating what would be happening exactly, when, and how it would affect our budget, our personnel, the future of Enigville, or anything else on that level. Does anyone know how this will directly affect the district as a whole, the residents who know nothing about this change, the Enigville residents this will affect, and the part-time personnel that works at Enigville? We're asking to delay this consideration, and we request that Cabarrus County Fire Marshal and Manager meet with our Board of Directors and discuss this effect on everyone. There are many questions of the long-term effect of our department with the loss of a hundred and twenty thousand dollar tax revenue that we have been receiving from Cabarrus County. This will cause, cause more staff reduction and more layoffs. Rowan County needs to have preparation time because we'll have to ask for more funding or let them know what will happen if Enigville loses this district funding. We are approximately three weeks away from the budget to be turned in to Rowan County. We feel that it would have been more appropriate if we had been contacted by someone by Cabarrus County or the Commission Board so that we would have a more reasonable amount of time to make our necessary budget changes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The next I have here is Mrs. Lisa Joins.
My name is Lisa Joins. I live at 2225 Kenwood Drive in Kannapolis. I am a commissioner for the Enigville Fire Department, and in thy role, it's my responsibility to review the budget that is turned in to Rowan County and also to Cabarrus County. With the little notice that we have been given on the possibility of our contract not being renewed, now we're faced with, how are we going to provide service to our existing community, take care of our firemen with the many needs they have for apparatus, fire gear, all the different things it takes to be a volunteer fire department? And at this time, we'd just like to ask you all to please reconsider maybe postponing the vote for another time, and as Ms. Bost said, having someone come down and talk to us, because we really would like to know how this is going to affect us. We've never been approached with this before since I've been with the volunteer fire department, which is about fifteen years. So, this is something new to, to our board and to a lot of our members. It really would be helpful in my position as a commissioner, looking at the budgets, and I know you all understand that, just to know what we need to do if this does take place. So, we would ask for a little bit more time. We would ask for consideration to postpone the vote and to send someone to come down and speak with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Joins. Next, we have is Mr. Clark Mackey.
My name is Clark Mackey. I live at 1404 South Juniper Avenue in Kannapolis. I'm a fire officer with the Enigville Volunteer Fire Department. Fire Department has faithfully served the citizens of Cabarrus County for twenty-plus years. There have been no formal indications to the Fire Department of poor performance from any representative from Cabarrus County. Our department, like many others in the county, depends on volunteers, and occasionally there are those calls that get missed. Usually, these are likely the case because someone did respond in their own vehicle and did not have a radio. The radios on the eight-hundred system are several thousand dollars, and it's hard to outfit every volunteer fireman with a radio so that they can talk on it and tell them we're on scene. Mr. Robinson from the Rowan Telecommunications Center was contacted and ran a report for us for Cabarrus County. In that report, he did state that we did miss eleven calls in the proposed, or in the fire district in Cabarrus County instead of the twenty that we were told about, and out of those eleven, it's still possible that we didn't have communications with Cabarrus County's comm center because Rowan County actually dispatches us. There's a CAD-to-CAD where Cabarrus County takes a call, they send it to Rowan, and Rowan hits our pagers. Out of those eleven, ten of them were medicals where Cabarrus County EMS is the primary agency. We would just be the first responders. The other one was utility lines down. Cabarrus County in 2005 approved an installment purchase agreement to finance the purchase on a new pumper for Enigville's entire area. It was indicated in a letter from the President to then-chairperson Carolyn Carpenter that the ability for us to be able to purchase this much-needed piece of apparatus was based on our current tax rate and budget. This loan will not be paid off till 2017, and the amount of money that was budgeted for this piece of apparatus was based on the funds from Cabarrus and Rowan Counties. Had the Cabarrus County Fire Marshal's Office contacted us earlier in the year, we may have been able to make sufficient budget cuts to be able to sustain, but like the other board managers said, we're three, three weeks away from having to get a budget turned in, and how are we going to keep the lights on and pay our truck bills and, and keep my firemen in safe turnout gear? This plan has been in the works from the Cabarrus County Fire Marshal's Office for some time, based on conversations that we've had with other agencies. We, the department, the board, and most importantly, the citizens of the affected area, were not informed of the proposed changes until a meeting on January the 29th. We feel that this secretive, closed-door approach was very unprofessional.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have is Mr. Stephen Olson.
Chairman White, fellow members. Stephen Olson, 5480, Enigville School Road, China Grove. I live just about a quarter mile from the station. I moved to Rowan County upon retiring from the Navy. I came down here and found a wonderful community, and my experience in the service has taught me a number of things, but first of all, how to provide emergency support, and I'm very much disappointed in, in this whole, what's, what's happened here. Currently, I'm on the board, and that's how I became involved in this. The cost-savings initiative is commendable, but the poor execution of the plan has created confusion within the levels of government and general concern for the citizens. It's complicated by incorrect and misleading information, as President Bost brought forward on the, through the newspaper. The implications and repercussions are far-reaching. There's been extremely little or no consideration for Rowan County leadership or management, and there's apparently no concern for the immediate impact on the Enigville District financially. To my knowledge, no formal presentation or proposal has been brought forward to our board or to Rowan County officials. State Fire Marshal has not been involved. Voids in the Cabarrus portion of the established district would result in failure or timely responses to the calls from our citizens. This relying on mutual aid, and again, this is relying on Enigville to dash in where Odell or Kannapolis could not provide support, is a hope, but it's not a guarantee. Right now, we have equipment and personnel dedicated for that very purpose. That's why, as we were just heard from, is where we had the extra money and the extra equipment brought forward. Currently, the equipment and manpower are dedicated, again, to serve this area, for the entire area. Cost burden and for additional equipment is going to be pushed on to Rowan County. Again, this is a concern for our citizens. I ask that you please delay any decisions, and as the, as my preacher would say, to pause, ponder, pray, and then proceed. That's what I ask. Just briefly, I'm a fast talker, so I just wanted to slip in a couple thoughts of folks that passed on to me. I'm just going to highlight these. "You and your fellow firefighters are an answer to my prayers," said Nita Lydicker. "I've lived in the Enigville community for over thirty-five years. Could always count on the Enigville Fire and Rescue Department when needed," Mrs. Treese. "Words can never express how much department means to this entire community." That's from Bill and Lois McQuarwick. County EMS response time was fifty minutes, and Enigville unit was there in under ten minutes. If the loss of their district to Cabarrus County is approved, they will possibly lose their part-time staffing, along with many other things that they need to better serve this community. It will possibly force them to return strictly to a volunteer fire department, which will also increase their response time to emergencies. Signed Gerald Mary Garman.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. And we have Mr. Price Crutchfield. Would you like, you have filled out a card. Why don't you come up and tell us what you want, you want to talk about police drinking alcohol on school property?
Yes, sir. I've been here before about this.
Yes, sir.
Still, nothing's been done about this. Concord Police have been compromising our schools for our children by consuming alcoholic beverages on school property. Now, this is against the law, no ifs, ands, or buts about it, and there's a no tolerance, zero-tolerance policy on this type of thing at schools, drugs and alcohol, things like that, weapons and the like. Now, when police can consume alcoholic beverages with impunity on school property, what kind of an example does that set for our students and our children? I mean, somebody's got to lay down the law here, and obviously, the chief of police, Merrell Hamilton, won't do it. He's too busy arresting me for cussing on the sidewalk. That's why he didn't have time to arrest the police for consuming alcoholic beverages on school property. Couple months have went by now, and nothing's been done, and I just feel that those responsible for breaking the law and consuming alcoholic beverages on school property with the police should be held accountable. They should have to answer for their crimes over here at the court where there's a no-deferred prosecution policy. Others have been arrested for the same thing and had to pay the penalty. We need to have checks and balances so that our citizens know that our law enforcement is fair and impartial, and they're held accountable also for their crimes. Now, I was convicted of cussing on the sidewalk, and I had to pay for my crime, and so there was no ifs, ands, or buts about it, no deferred prosecution, no plea bargains. I had to pay for cussing on the sidewalk. I said the S-word, and I had to pay for it. I feel that police should have to pay for consuming alcoholic beverages on school property. That's against the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crutchfield. As a point of note, and also point of clarification, as I understand it, is tonight, if we were to move forward with the Enigville Fire Department non-renewal of the contract, it doesn't, it provides that we are not going to renew, and it's a ninety-day written notice. Is that, is that correct? So, it's not stopping right today?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. And it still allows us to continue to talk with Enigville or Rowan County if something better can be done?
That's correct, and we did receive a letter from the county attorney, JD's, today, and we'll be following up with him this week on that issue.
And one thing that, unless people were watching at our first meeting, it was brought to our attention, and it was presented at that point in time regarding, we were actually, by, if we were to move forward with this, we'd reduce the taxes within our own county. We would provide better services than what we're getting right now, and would also, we would have, we wouldn't have the missed calls that we're having, is what was presented to us before, but by voting on it tonight, it does not prevent us from still talking and see if things can get worked out.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. We have the consent agenda before us. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next matter we have is new business, is G1. That is found on page eighty, and I would like to call on Mr. Randy Bass. Ah, Mr. Bass is not here, but we have someone that could help us even better. Mr. Bushy.
Thank you. We're here this evening for our public hearing for 2010-2011 Community Transportation Grant. This grant from the state provides administrative funds for transportation departments, such as salaries and wages for the director, coordinator, and administrative assistant, as well as building rental, utilities, cleaning services, phones, et cetera. This year, we are applying for four hundred and one thousand and twenty dollars, which does require a fifteen percent county match, sixty thousand, one fifty-three.
Are there any questions right now? I'll open this matter up for public hearing. Does anybody want to speak for or against the adoption of the 2010-2011 Community Transportation Program Resolution? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. We have a motion to adopt the 2010-2011-
So, move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next matter we have is G2, which is found on page eighty-six, and this is a request by Research City LLC for refund of ad valorem taxes paid on real property. I would call on Mr. Cook to get us up to speed on this right now, and then we'll get to Mr. Moretz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back in early February, I had sent to each member of the board a memorandum that essentially explained this request by Research City LLC for a tax refund. Attached to that memorandum were the applicable statutes that govern this type of situation, also a particular Court of Appeals case that, that construes the statutes, as well as a copy of the request by Research City LLC to be refunded these taxes, and then also another letter from Mr. Moretz from, I think, last June that contains some background information concerning the request. Just to summarize what was in the memorandum for tonight's purposes, the request is for refund of twenty-seven hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-five cents in taxes that were paid by Research City LLC on property located at 1219 Pine Church Road in Concord. Research City had purchased that property at a, at a homeowners association lien foreclosure sale that had been conducted. It subsequently determined that, that there was a defect in the title unrelated to that particular foreclosure, and essentially undid the transaction and is no longer the owner of that property. Prior to that having occurred, the Research City had, had paid three years of back taxes that were on the property that were disclosed by, by the title search. So, then, once they due the property back and no longer owned it- So then, once they deed the property back and no longer owned it, comes this request for a refund. Attached to the, this agenda item in the, in the agenda is a copy of NCGS 105381, which is the applicable statute that controls this situation. And that particular statute allows a refund in three specific situations. One is where there is an illegal tax. One is where there is a tax that is levied for an illegal purpose. And the third is a tax imposed through a clerical error. Clearly, the imposition of taxes by Cabarrus County on this parcel was not illegal. It was done in the regular course of, of the assessment and imposition of taxes for all parcels during those three years. So, the issue is not whether it's illegal or not, or was imposed for an illegal purpose. The sole issue before you this evening is whether it was, whether there was a clerical error that was, that occurred with reference to, to this tax. There is a case, the Ammons case, which I had included for you, that was a Court of Appeals case from nineteen ninety-seven, which basically said that a clerical error is a transcription error by the tax administrator, such as making an incorrect entry in, in the tax records. I think Mr. Moretz is going to address the factual issues here. It's my understanding that, that this is not a transcription error. It is, in fact, a situation where the taxpayer paid the taxes believing that they owned the property, and now, since they no longer own it, paid the taxes in the meantime, that they should be refunded those taxes. There was also an issue that, that Mr. Moretz may bring up concerning talking to some folks in, in our Tax Collectors Office, in which apparently, this person related to them that they can, in fact, refund the taxes. I found no one, in my investigation of this, that in the Tax Collectors Office indicated that they made such a statement. I would just advise you that, that even if they did, such a person wouldn't have had the authority to do so under the statute. That's a decision that has to be made by this board. And it's clear that there's a situation in which it can be delegated, but this board has not, by resolution, chosen to delegate that. And even if they had, it's limited to taxes of less than a hundred dollars. So, that, I think, sums up the background of this particular case. I would also, just as I indicated in the memo, remind the board that under 105380, that if members of the board vote for a refund, and there's an issue made of it later, that it was not illegal, that the refund of those taxes was not provided or allowed by statute, that the members of the board can, under 105380, be held personally liable for those taxes.
Do we have any questions right now for Mr. Cook? Okay. Mr. Moretz?
Thank you, Chairman White. My name is Zach Moretz. My address is thirty-seven Union Street, South Suite B, Concord, right across the street. Thank you, Rich. That was a, not a very welcoming, although extremely, very factual, presentation. Everything Rich said is, almost everything he said is completely true. We're not, let me just make perfectly clear, the county has done nothing wrong in this situation. Nobody did anything wrong. It's just a very regrettable situation that somebody that was also, did nothing wrong, has paid some taxes that they shouldn't have paid. And we're here asking the commission to, to refund those taxes and collect those taxes from who should legitimately pay them, which is the property owner. The only two things I want to correct from what Rich said are, one, we're not here to argue that there was a clerical error of any kind, or that the, or that the tax was illegal. We are arguing that, first of all, that the commission does have the authority to correct an error that's made in the taxing situation. The applicable statute says a valid defense shall include the following, and then it lists the three situations that Rich described, but it doesn't say shall only include, or shall be limited to these three situations. So, we believe that the commission does have the authority to basically reverse this tax payment that was made, and either apply it to Mr. McAfee's other taxes that he may owe, or refund it and collect it from the property owner who owns the property in question. And I think the authority is there for that. And in fact, the case of Redevelopment Commission versus Guilford County specifies that this section does provide a remedy for erroneous taxes, as well as invalid or illegal taxes. So, and again, we're not here saying the county committed any error. Very briefly, it's a complete, completely confusing situation, but it's a situation in which the Homeowners Association, for this particular property, had put a lien on this property for failure to pay Homeowners Association dues. And the lien was placed on CIT Group, which, as you know, is a major lender, who I don't know if they're still in business or not, but probably on the, lucky if they are. The public records of Cabarrus County, and I performed two title searches in this matter, revealed that they were the owner of that property. We sent all the requisite notices and all these things, and never got any response, as well as to the homeowner, and never got any response. So, we foreclosed on that property on behalf of the Homeowners Association. My, my very close friend, Ed McAfee here, who is the sole member, or member with his wife, I think, of Research City LLC, which is just a little LLC, which he owns a couple of rental properties in, and certainly nothing, it's not, it sounds grandiose, but it owns a few rental properties. He bought the, this little rental house, it's just a little house that he was going to use for a rental house, in a subdivision at the foreclosure sale that was done by the Homeowners Association. At that time, we, my firm did the closing, and there were three years of back taxes owed on this property. And Mr. McAfee, out of his own pocket, paid the twenty-seven hundred dollars to pay the taxes for two thousand eight, two thousand seven, and two thousand six, I believe it was, to the county. In going to his new, newly purchased rental house to see who seemed to be occupying it, it turned out that the people, the Alstons occupied the house, just as they had been occupying it for the past four or five years. And in fact, CIT Group, their foreclosure never happened. They, they foreclosed on the property, but the day before, they, they completed their foreclosure, foreclosing on the Alstons, the Alstons filed bankruptcy. Well, any bankruptcy filing immediately stops any bankrupt, any foreclosure proceeding. Therefore, even though the attorney for CIT Group, who was performing a foreclosure for that lender, did, went forward and recorded his deed and completed that foreclosure completely, it was of no effect because the federal courts had said, no, these people have filed bankruptcy. Nothing is recorded in the public records to that effect. And apparently, the attorney in Raleigh who did the bankruptcy for CIT, I'm sorry, the foreclosure for CIT Group, had no knowledge of it. He completed the process, recorded a deed. There is still a deed recorded in Cabarrus County public records that shows that CIT Group is the owner of this real estate. That's who we foreclosed on when CIT Group did not pay their Homeowners Association dues for a year and a half, and subsequently transferred the property to Mr. McAfee. He goes and knocks on the door, the Alstons relay the entire story, much to our chagrin because we have a complete mess now. Of course, you know, he's paid money for the property to the Homeowners Association. Luckily, we're able to undo all of that. The only thing that is left is the fact that he paid these three years of tax, back taxes to the county that are rightfully owed by, really, the Alstons. They're the people that still live in the property and that have filed bankruptcy. Unfortunately, in this situation, there is nobody that Mr. McAfee can recover that from. We have filed a proof of claim with the bankruptcy court, but I frankly think it's unlikely that that will be paid by the bankruptcy trustee, because he's going to claim that we don't have any standing to make a claim in that particular proceeding, and there's probably no money there to pay it anyway. The, the attorney that filed the erroneous deed into CIT Group many years ago, we don't have any legally, legal relationship or contractual relationship with him, so I don't think we could file a claim on his malpractice insurance or something like that to try to get this paid. The Alstons are not going to pay it. They're in bankruptcy. They couldn't pay it if they wanted to, because they can only pay what the bankruptcy trustee lets them pay. So, we are here asking the county to refund these funds to Research City LLC, or in the alternative, apply them to other taxes, other real property taxes that it owns on a couple of, its other couple of rental properties, in the interest of fairness, because he has no other remedy in this situation. Whereas, the county will still have, those taxes will still be owed. The statute is very clear that the taxes will still be owed, will still be recoverable from that property upon which they're due. And as you know, the county has a superior lien, superior to almost everything, and pretty, pretty sizable powers to collect taxes from property owners. I don't think the statute says that you can't do it. I believe it says that you can do it, that these are not the only situations. And there is a case I cited that allows taxes to be refunded where they were erroneous, quote unquote. But again, we are not claiming that the county did anything wrong. We did speak to Debbie in the tax office back in the fall when we were trying to undo this thing, and she said, no problem, we'll apply this to other taxes that Research City owes. So, we put things back the status quo the way they were. I understand she probably didn't have authority to do that, but we did believe that that had been done. So, we are here asking for special dispensation, not a special dispensation, I think it's allowed under statute, but for fairness, and to help a taxpayer who is a contributor to this county, and who has, pays a lot of property taxes on some other properties that he owns, never been behind, never been late. And the only remedy he has at this point to undo this deal, he never owned the property, let me make that very clear. He didn't deed it back. He never owned it. The deed that he received was completely invalid because it was coming from a Homeowners Association, which foreclosed on CIT Group, which didn't own the property. The Alstons always owned the property because they filed bankruptcy just in time to stop the foreclosure proceeding that was on them in the past, if all that makes sense. It's very confusing. And again, I did two title searches, and another independent attorney did a third title search, and none of us, I mean, it's just, it's not able to be found. It's not, the public records are wrong, and that's not anybody's fault either, really, except the, probably the attorney who did it a long time ago probably has a duty to, or ought to rectify that ethically, anyway. But Mr. McAfee ends up being the, unfortunately, the loser in this case, and the twenty-seven hundred dollars is, is very significant to him. He is a commission-only salesperson. His wife was laid off from First, Third Bank last year. He's the sole breadwinner. She was just diagnosed with cancer last, what, last month, two months ago? It's, it's an appreciable, a significant amount of money for him and his family, and we'd be eternally grateful if the county commission could see its way through to refund this tax and recover it from, from those that truly pay it. We're just asking that the status quo be restored here, and that this error be undone, and the county collect the tax from who rightfully owes it, as it, you know, it has powerful ability to do so. If there are any questions on the legal sort of end of it, I'd be happy to answer. I would, if it's okay, ask you to hear from Mr. McAfee briefly.
Any questions for Mr. Moretz? Mr. Moretz, how much did Mr. McAfee purchase this property for at the foreclosure?
Do you, do you recall? Maybe seventy-five, eighty thousand, something in that range.
And when you buy something in foreclosure, is, is it not purchased as-is? I mean, you, but you buy it as-is in, in whatever taxes and whatever's owed on the house, or the foreclosed property? Is that not what happens?
Um, I'm sorry? Yeah, well, if you want to close, you have to pay whatever, I mean, whatever's on there. But the thing was, is that those people hadn't paid it for three years. I don't know why, whoever, why that hadn't been collected from them, but who was, he was foreclosing on did not, in fact, own the property, and in fact, did not own any, owe any taxes, CIT Group.
And I understand Mr. McAfee was not foreclosing, but the Homeowners Association was foreclosing, correct?
That's correct.
What, did the president walk over to the House and find out where the Alstons were? I mean, did they?
Nobody, um-
Nobody walked over there to say, hey, neighbor?
We, we called them, we sent them letters, never got any response, never got any response from CIT Group, never got any response from anybody. Had somebody knocked on the door, which is, as you probably know, pretty unusual, usually you just follow the legal, kind of go through the legal proceeding, because you don't know what's going to happen when you knock on a stranger's door.
No, I'm talking about somebody from the neighborhood. The president of the Homeowners Association at the time never walked over there to say, hey, what's up?
Nope. That's the one thing that could have, could have saved the situation. Obviously, I wish it had been done.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. McAfee, you want to speak briefly?
I appreciate you guys considering this unusual situation. I'm a commercial real estate broker here in Cabarrus County, and so, I have quite a bit of knowledge about how real estate gets done. I'm also a, an investor of property, and we have bought investment properties before here in the county. And like I said, this is just a very unusual situation. I hired a professional to do a job for me. He did his job. We had, we had backup checks, and everybody followed the right procedures. It's not anyone's fault why this happened, but we're in the predicament that we're in. I just ask that, that, you know, we be fair about this and apply the taxes towards property that I do own. The taxes were paid at closing. We actually did close this property, only to find out that we had no legal right to the property. So, I would ask that you all consider making this thing right. And I would say that if it does come back onto this board as the responsible party, at that time, I would step up and make it right, so that you all are not personally responsible. I would step back in and pay those taxes, so that you all would not personally have any responsibility in that.
Anybody question, have any questions for Mr. McAfee?
My question is not for Mr. McAfee, it's for Mr. Cook. He closed on the property. However, he never legally owned the property. Is that the correct situation here?
I don't know that I can answer-
He's never been the legal owner of this property.
I don't know that I can answer that question, because I didn't do a title search on it, and that would be a question that you could only answer after having examined the title. What I can tell you is that, is that there was a closing that took place, there was a deed that was recorded. Now, generally, when a deed is recorded, it transfers title, whether it be just between a regular grantor and grantee, or in a trustee's deed in a foreclosure type of situation, presumably, it transfers title. But there are situations in which if the, if the grantor, meaning the person conveying the property, never had title to start out with because of some issue back in the chain of title, or something that, that, that is in the title itself, then that deed would not convey title to the property, even though it was recorded. So, I think that's what I understand Mr. Moretz to be saying, is that because of the status of the title, that even though they did a closing and recorded a deed, that that deed never conveyed title to the property. And I say, unless I did a title search, I couldn't say whether that's the case or not. I have no reason to, to dispute what Mr. Moretz says about it, but what the record shows is that a deed was in proper form, because it was accepted by the registered deeds for recordation, was recorded ostensibly, presumably, transfer entitled to this property to Research City LLC.
Another question.
Mr. Moretz, if you step over to the microphone, that way we can-
Research City Association, we deeded it back to, yeah, think how much he enjoyed doing this, deeded it back to the Alstons, because they were really the proper owner, which is what the original attorney should have done a long time ago, who left the public records in disarray, leaving it, it looked like CIT owned it, when in fact, they didn't. We deeded it, you know, so he, he never did get title because they had nothing to convey, but just to clear up the public record, we did, can, recorded deed, putting it back where it should have been all along.
The next question. Who has the authority, or where would the authority come from to cause the commissioners to pay this fee? Who would make that decision?
I think the only way that that could arise is if some other taxpayer in the county challenged a decision to, to issue this refund. There would have to have been a deter- challenged a decision to, to issue this refund. There would have to have been a determination in a court of law that, that if this commission voted to approve the refund, that it was not pursuant to the statute, that it was outside of the authority granted to you under 105381. But that could only arise through some lawsuit by another taxpayer challenging a decision of that sort.
And that other taxpayer would probably be spending more than $2,800 trying to make us pay $2,800.
I think that's a fair statement, yes.
Can we be protected from such a situation if Mr. McAfee made a legal agreement that he would pay that, should that be the case?
There's nothing in the statute that permits that. I suppose that it could be done as a contractual matter. The, there are some, I think, practical problems with that, one of which would be the cost of trying to collect it, if, in fact, you had to make demand under that contract for the 2,800. But I'm not aware of anything in the statutes that would prohibit that.
Those are my only questions. My comment is that, to me, this is one of those situations where laws cannot cover every single conceivable situation. And this, to me, is an unfortunate circumstance. And I would be personally in favor of refunding him or applying it to his other taxes.
Any other questions for Mr. Moretz or Mr. Cook? You have a question? Commissioner Poole?
Yeah, if I can remember what it was now. There was a comment made that county has the power to collect the taxes even with the bankruptcy. Is that correct? Or we have standing, I guess, by having the taxes?
Ordinarily, the lien for ad valorem property taxes that the county has comes ahead of any other lien on the property, even liens that are placed on the property subsequent to the years those taxes are assessed. When the owner of the property files bankruptcy, there are certain situations in which a bankruptcy court can affect adversely to the county such a lien. We've actually had that situation come up in some other cases where the county had an otherwise standard statutory valid lien on, on real estate. And the bankruptcy court, because of the, the nature of the broad powers that a bankruptcy court enjoys to administer the assets of the bankruptcy estate, has knocked out that lien or even subordinated it in some cases. And without getting into an extended discussion about the, the effect of bankruptcy law on local property taxes, that can occur. These folks are in Chapter 13, as I understand. Is that right, Mr. Moretz?
Correct, yes.
Which is a type of bankruptcy that allows individuals to actually file bankruptcy, hold their creditors at bay while they work out a plan within the bankruptcy to pay their, their debts. And typically, that involves just paying some percentage of their debts that aren't secured. The ad valorem property tax is a, is entitled to a priority in bankruptcy. But how a refund of this, this tax and essentially reinstitution of those taxes as a lien on that real estate would, would affect their Chapter 13, I couldn't tell you exactly how that, because it comes subsequent, I would assume, to the, the approval of their plan, which didn't include paying these taxes. So, whether the county would be able to go back and...
I don't know that to be the case. Their plan had been, plan had been in place for a couple of years. So, I don't know that to be the case, that it didn't include that.
Well, there were no payments made to the county on those taxes.
That's another question. There were three years...
That much we do know. Otherwise, when they were paid, that would have been reflected in the accounting in the collections department. So... And I can't answer that question with exact precision because, you know, it's, it gets pretty complicated by the interplay of, of the bankruptcy law, which is federal law, and, and the local ad valorem property tax law, which is state law.
The statute itself does say, however, that if, if a refund or some accommodation is made, that the lien, the tax does go back just as it was, I believe, the statute that we're discussing today.
Well, that is true. That is true. But, but it, but that, that doesn't really necessarily mean anything at the federal courthouse.
Well, yeah, anytime you're dealing with bankruptcy, they have such broad powers. It's very difficult to have a definitive answer on it.
There's another statute that also allows a person who pays taxes in error to stand in the shoes of the county with respect to collection of those taxes. That's not 380 or 381, but it's, it's another statute right along in with those others. That happens from time to time, particularly with mortgage companies who will pay a number of their customers' taxes in one check. And they'll pay maybe 100, 150 different parcels from escrow accounts that homeowners have. And every now and then, they pay it on the wrong property. And typically, in that situation, they understand that it's their responsibility to go collect it out of the right person and, and to pay it accordingly. It's not something that, for which the county typically refunds on that which they paid in, if it's their error, not the county's error.
Do you know anything about the 2009 taxes? Because what this references was 06, 07, and 08. So, as, do we know anything about, has anything happened with the '09 taxes?
I do not.
My, I think that it's, obviously, I agree completely. It's a very unfortunate situation. And, I mean, my, my reaction at this point in time is, is that I'd like to know a little bit more about where we are with the '09 taxes. And I'd like to get a little more clarification on bankruptcy and by us refunding the taxes, what chances we have to collect those taxes from the true homeowner to make sure that, that we've covered all that. And I'm not certain that we have enough information on that at this point in time. For me to feel comfortable that we know, you know, how all that's going. So, my reaction at this point in time, I haven't heard your questions, Commissioner White or Commissioner Privet, at this time, I would lean more to tabling it for 30 days to try to give our attorney a chance to verify some of those, some other information to make that a, I don't know, a more knowledgeable decision on my part. So, that's all I have right now.
So, you'd feel more comfortable if we would table this till the May meeting?
I don't know if the, if our attorney or Commissioner White, I think, has some questions too. So, you know, I don't know what the majority feels like. I'm just saying, at this point, those, those are questions that I have, is what about the '09 taxes? And would we, in fact, be able to collect from the property owner? And I don't know if there was title insurance purchased during that time, if there's any title insurance that we could go back on. I mean, I understand everything that you've said. I'm just trying to figure out what other loops and holes there are out there. So, that's my only question.
My understanding is there was no title insurance purchased in connection with the foreclosure you conducted. Is that right, Mr. Moretz?
Not in the foreclosure sale, no.
Well, sometimes there are, there is title insurance purchased during a foreclosure transaction. But it was my understanding there was none with reference to this transaction. Is that right?
Right. Not in the foreclosure, which puts, put the, ostensibly put the title into the homeowners' association, which is who transferred it into Mr. McAfee. Of course, Mr. McAfee got title insurance, which really wouldn't apply because the grantor never had good title.
Is this bankruptcy in the middle district or the western district?
I believe it's in the western district.
Western?
Yes. Is there a, is the time, the 90-day limitation, would that create a problem?
What he's referring to is that, is that in 105381, there is a provision that, that puts a deadline on consideration of these types of requests. And the way it works is that if you choose not to do anything within 90 days of Mr. Moretz's request, which was January 5th, 2010, then it's automatically considered to be a denial of the request for a refund. However, I think that, that the board is within its power to table this so long as it's understood by the taxpayer that, that a decision on it may be rendered outside the 90 days. I don't see that that would create a problem. I think that, I think that provision is in there for the benefit of the taxpayer so they, so they get a decision one way or the other. Because if, if it's, if the request is denied, then they have the right to file a civil action to, to challenge it. I, that's my reading of the statute, is that's the reason it's in there, is really for your benefit. So, if you have no objection to, to it running beyond 90 days from the day to your request, I think the board is within its power to do that.
I think that would be fine. And we certainly don't intend to sue the county, you know. If this, if this county determines not to do this, he'll just have to eat the $2,700.
What, when stamps are indicated, how much, what does one stamp reference on a deed or something like that? What does that mean? What does one stamp reference? What does that mean?
One dollar, $500 in purchase, value of purchase price.
$500?
One, yeah. So, it's $2, $2 per thousand. I mean, I have the deed in my file if you're...
Right here, it says that there's 22 stamps where, when Research, Research City purchased it, they did 22 stamps. So, that's $11,000, right?
No, no, that'd be, that'd be $44,000.
$44,000?
That'd be right?
Okay. So, you purchased it for $44,000. How much is the property worth?
Don't, don't have any idea.
It's $2,000 in purchase price typically, or so...
I'm saying, here is the, the Alstons paid 264 stamps or made, paid, you know, put down 264 stamps in 2006. So, that's about a $300,000 piece of property, $200,000.
No, no, I guess, no, you would divide by two.
That's correct. 264 would be $132,000 that they paid for the property.
Okay.
So, $22 in stamps would be $11,000.
So, you paid $11,000 for a $130,000 piece of property?
Yeah, that's right.
He doesn't own this property.
Well...
Whatever he paid for, I'm, you know, he didn't pay much.
Irrelevant.
It was a foreclosure sale. You are buying a pig in a poke, no question.
Okay. I mean...
As he learned, because he got, there wasn't even a pig in the poke.
And the, it looks like the deed shows here that it's 50% to the CIT group and 50% to the Alstons. Is that incorrect? I'm looking at just what...
We, we included both on there because it was simply a quick claim deed. We didn't want to make any, any warranties or representations of title whatsoever. We were putting it back in the two properties that appeared that they would have some ownership to it since we, the public record had already thrown us off. Yeah, that was my doing, just as a quick claim deed, to put it back. And, you know, it's for somebody else to determine who really owns this property between those two. But it's, it certainly doesn't, it wasn't, it's not CIT group based on the bankruptcy.
And, okay. And the attorney in, then Raleigh, that did all, that created this conundrum, what is his response about paying Mr. McAfee the taxes?
I've not, he's not responding to my letters and my phone calls.
Okay. And does he not have a senior partner? Does he not have another partner that's willing to talk to you about it?
He, I believe he is the senior partner. So, I could certainly continue to pursue that, you know. That was, you know, it's a possibility. I think it's, I think it's unlikely. He's probably doing probably what I would do, just not take the call and hoping that it goes away, which I think is what he's hoping. But, you know...
And am I correct, Mr. Cook, that if someone pays taxes in error on their own part, they stand in the shoes of the county and have the rights of the county?
That's my understanding of the statutes, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Poole was wanting to get a little more information that I don't know if Mr. Cook can get tonight. Is there a motion to table this for 30 days or 60 days? I don't know how long it would take to get some of that information, Mr. Cook.
I'll know about the 2009 taxes tomorrow morning. So, that one could be, the answer to that can be fairly quick. With reference to their bankruptcy, I can, if it's in the western district, you know, I can, we can, we can get access to the file electronically. That's not a problem either. What may take a little bit of time is to figure out where the county would stand vis-à-vis that bankruptcy in the event that you were to grant the refund. That's, that, and, but I, I think even with that, we can have an answer for you within, by the next meeting.
The next meeting would be April the 19th, or our May meeting would be May the 17th, if I, if it looks, if I'm looking at this right.
I can't think of any reason right now why we couldn't have answered to both of those questions by the April meeting.
April 19th. Mr. Moretz?
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to table this matter until April 19th?
I'll make that motion.
Second motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank y'all for spending so much time on this. I know you have more important things. Occupy your time. We appreciate you.
As you know, the law was a bit complicated.
Well, it is, and it's a mess. And, you know, we rely on the public records being accurate, and 99.9% of the time, they are. And this is just sort of a perfect storm where a number of things came together to make it. Nothing you could do. But, thank you.
Thank you. Next matter we have is G3, which is the adoption of revised fund balance policy and appropriations appropriating 2 million to self-funded insurance funds, page 90. Mrs. Dubois?
Good evening. I come before you to make a revision to the fund balance policy that was adopted on June 14th of 2005, and also to request a budget amendment to be approved for $2 million to be transferred to the self-funded insurance funds. The amendment that we're requesting to the, the resolution is, revolves around the economic conditions in which we are experiencing. The changes that we are requesting to be made is that upon the completion of the annual audit, anything in excess of 15% has the ability to be transferred, not only to the capital reserve fund, but also to add the option to transfer those monies to one of the three self-insured health insurance, liability, or workers' comp funds that the county has. And the fourth portion of that is, notwithstanding several of the requirements that are in the resolution, to also be able to appropriate any use of general funds to overcome revenue shortfalls related to the significant downturn in the economy. And that's, of course, what's we're experiencing right now. So, in the calculation that we go through in the process of each year, if you look on page 29, the fund balance calculation comes down to the county having $11,070,205 of excess fund balance over our 15% policy. We have appropriations that we have made in the fiscal 2010 budget year of $1.8 million. And we're asking to transfer $2 million to the self-insured fund, which would leave us with $7.1 million available to be transferred to the capital reserve fund. We are also requesting an exception not to transfer those monies over at this point in time and to leave them in the general fund in order for us to be able to potentially balance our budget over the next two to three fiscal years based on the circumstances that we may face. that we may face. So those are basically the primary requests that we're asking, is for the amendment to the resolution, and to get permission to transfer $2 million to the health insurance fund at $1 million, and the workers' comp fund at another million dollars, and to maintain that $7.1 million in the general fund for the necessary actions that we may take over this, either this year's budget or next year's budget.
Any questions for Mrs. Dubois?
Make a motion to be adopted, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you. Next matter we have is on page 98, G4, it's a resolution relating to the amendment of the existing consent agreements to allow rendering of voluntary mitigation payments at building permitting for lots which no voluntary mitigation payment has been made. Mr. Day.
I should recall, this is an item that came up during the board's annual planning retreat, and the resolution here was drafted by the county attorney, so I would ask him to discuss that.
Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Day. As the county manager pointed out, this was something that was discussed at the retreat, and there's a whole lot of verbiage in the two pages of this resolution, but to boil it down to what is its essence, it would allow the policy of the board to change from requiring that developers and builders who, in their compliance with the adequate public facilities ordinance, in which they are required to make a voluntary mitigation payment as part of the agreement that they reached with the county in the consent agreement, that they would be allowed to pay that voluntary mitigation payment at building permitting, as opposed to paying at a final plating, which is what is currently the board's policy. That really is the essence of it, and that's contained on the second page. Now, in terms of administration of that, what this resolution does is because there are so many of these consent agreements that would be potentially affected by this change, that the board would authorize Mr. Day to execute the amendments, so that each one of them doesn't have to be brought back to this board, and allow me to make a determination legally as to whether the amendment is drafted complies with this resolution and the adequate public facilities ordinance. And again, that's really to not burden the board with having to approve each individual amendment, since there would be a number of these that would occur. One other provision of this resolution that I'd like to bring to your attention is that it would expire by its own terms on September 30th, 2010, so that all amendments to consent agreements would contain automatically that provision, and that unless the board extended that time period, it would, the consent agreements would revert back to their original terms. And then finally, it only applies to lots that are platted after the date of the resolution. Those were, I think, part of the discussion at the retreat. I would also point out just one other thing that I don't think the board's aware of, and that is, the county now has a computer software system called Exella that actually tracks all of this information, and the way that it was programmed tracks it at final plating. Apparently, that's going to have to be reprogrammed, so that it can track it at building permitting for these, for any amendments, and also keep track of it at final plating for the ones that are already on the books. Suzie Morris, the planning and zoning manager, can, I think, more specifically address the burden that will be created by having to make that switch to the program, and it's my understanding that it's going to take about a month, or thereabouts, to actually get it reprogrammed and get all that in place, which I wanted to bring to the board's attention just because that would certainly cut into the amount of time before we could actually do any of these amendments. Like I say, Ms. Morris can actually address that more specifically than I, but there will be some logistical issues involved with the program.
We would be giving Mr. Day the authority to go ahead and approve these, but the developer still must make a request that that happen in his particular situation, isn't that correct? Is that, that's the way I read it in number one?
That is exactly the way it reads, and the reason that I drafted it that way was because we have some situations involving consent agreements, whether it be with builders or developers, where they're essentially out of business, and we're not sure which of those there are. I think some that we, some we know about, others, there's just been no activity on those projects, so it seemed that the best way to deal with that was to have them come forward and actually make the request, and then deal with them in that way. You'll notice that the last provision on page 2, also number 6, would require the Commerce Department to send a letter to all of the developer-builders with whom we have a consent agreement, to at least put them on notice that the board passed such a resolution and give them, you know, an opportunity to make that request. So that was sort of the counterbalance to requiring them to make the request, was we'd at least send them a letter and let them know that this is available to them.
Another question. The date of September 30th, why was that chosen?
That was the date that was discussed at the retreat.
I don't recall why, do you?
Six months was the timeframe, and then it was decided that...
If there's a lot of difficulty in reprogramming the system to follow this, would it be better to have the board, have it continue on past September 30th, but the board reconsider it on September 30th, rather than having it automatically expire? Because then if it automatically expires, it goes back to plating, and she's got to do that all over again.
Well, I just want to say, I think I'm the one that said six months, and one of the thoughts that I had behind it is, we have an election coming up, and there will be a change on the board, that would take place December, after a November election, and, I mean, I don't have a problem changing it to October 30th, or November 30th, or something, but I think that it would need to come up before the commission, either the current commission, or in December with a new board, to make a determination if that's something that wanted to be continued. So that was, just to add, that's where I was thinking during the retreat, I think I said six months. Then I think we also talked about, would it be September, October, November, or what we wanted to do, but one of my thoughts was having a new commission with two new members that we definitely should look at it again and not make it, keep going with the new board coming on.
Mrs. Morris.
Just to kind of fill you in on what would need to be done with the program, like Mr. Cook said, it will take about at least four weeks for that reprogramming to happen. The Exella program has a lot of scripting behind it that actually counts the permits that are issued, it counts the payments that we take in, and then it also has some additional scripting, that if somebody gets to that number of permits that they are allowed to have for that year, it then puts a hold on it, because it is, it's just too much for us to try to track every single one that comes in and every permit, so the system, we have gotten the system to a point right now where it actually works, and it will put the hold on those ones. It's taken us almost two years, but we've got it there. So what would have to happen is the scripting would have to go back, they'd have to go back and take care of some of that behind-the-scenes stuff. The programmer thinks it will take anywhere between three and four weeks, and then it also would have to be put into production, and we would have to check it to make sure that it's not going to go back and, you know, take payments out, and the issue becomes keeping what's in there current, and then allowing it to move forward with a different script. So it's going to have to switch back and forth between those two, because they may have already paid for, you know, say 50 lots that are on the books, but then they would be coming in, plating something new, and that one would be proceeding at permitting. So that's the anticipated timeframe, and we would probably need, you know, that time plus a little bit of lead time for the production, before we could actually start switching them over. So that's why I had brought that up, and just so that it's out there, that it wouldn't, we couldn't start doing it tomorrow, just so that you all know.
But if someone were to come to you tomorrow and say they wanted to change it, or do something, we could at least get them in the queue?
I believe the form would need to be made up and then approved, and then as soon as that was done...
Just because we don't have the software to go, we could still put them in the queue, so that when the software's ready to go, we input them in when we're going from there?
Yes, I believe that we could do that, as long as that process is together.
And we could also get a report in our August meeting, looks like it's the second, the first August, first Monday in August, at our work session, to see how it's going, what's the response, as to whether or not y'all need some time to, you know, to need more time or whatnot, or maybe we want to extend it. I mean, that's so that, is there any, is there, so even if we did it for September the 30th, we could always revisit it August the 2nd, and then maybe extend it if that's what we think is appropriate at the time, to November 30th, whatever date we want to select.
That's great. The end date at this point isn't really a catch, it's just getting it implemented and getting it started.
Okay.
Do we have a couple developers that came to us previously and that asked to do this, I mean, this was part of where it came from, so how are you tracking those? Do we have a few already that are doing it?
The folks that came to you and asked you their consent agreements were actually written at building permitting for a certain number, and at, you know, then at, prior to plating for the rest of them. So the system tracks it either one of two ways, it tracks it either prior to permitting or at building permitting. So that's where we're having to find that middle ground, so that it can actually track both of them together, because at this point, you're going to have a case that may already have some lots paid for prior to final plating, but they're not going to proceed in that section, they're going to move somewhere else and proceed with paying at plating, so it, or at permitting. So it tracks them now.
It tracks them now with an or, and we're trying to get a...
It's either or, and we're trying to do together.
And/or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Makes perfect sense.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Cook?
I'm sorry, I should ask Suzie probably, I apologize. Is there a cost associated with the programming that would be an issue, or...
It's an in-house person that would be doing it, so...
Right, it's just staff time.
Okay, so it's staff, I just want to make sure if we were having somebody from the outside having to come in to do that, that was a concern.
Any other questions? We have a motion to adopt the resolution relating to the amendment of the existing consent agreement as presented to allow rendering of the VMP voluntary mitigation payment at building permitting for lots which no VMP has been made to, through September 30th, 2010, beginning March 15th, 2010.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. And we do not have to vote on putting it on for discussion on August the 2nd work session, but if we can go ahead and get that on our calendar, so that we can get an update to see where we are, and see, hopefully it's helping, and that was our intent. With that, I believe that concludes everything we have under new business, and now we're going to the appointments of boards. Under H1, we have the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. Do we have a motion to appoint Mr. and Mrs. Lowery?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next is the CJPP appointments, which I will, will not read all, I don't want to bore everybody with them, but...
I'll make a motion to reappoint David Callaway, Jody Ramirez, Susan Snyder, Michael G. Knox, H.J. White, Sr., W. Irwin Spainhour, Tom Barcelona, and Benjamin S. Small to the CJP Criminal Justice Partnership Program for three-year terms ending April 30th, 2013, including an exemption to the length-of-service provision for W. Irwin Spainhour, and exemption to the service of multiple boards provision for Jody Ramirez and Michael G. Knox, and also a motion to appoint Mark Antozic to the Criminal Justice Partnership Program to fill an at-large position for a three-year term ending April 30th, 2013.
So a motion?
And acknowledge Anna Hood's many years of service to the community.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next matter is the Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority. Do we have a motion to reappoint Robert L. Pierce, Jr., Cheryl Laney, and Sanjay Mistry to six-year terms ending January 10, 2016, including an exception to the length-of-service provisions of the appointment policy for Mr. Pierce, Mr. Laney, and Mr. Mistry?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Now to the Nursing Home CAC Appointment, we have a motion to reappoint Mrs. Sylvia Curry-Johnson to the NHCAC for a three-year term ending March 31st, 2013, and remove Mrs. Sally Milks from the roster and acknowledge her service.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. We have, on the Transportation Advisory Board, we have a motion to appoint Mrs. Julie Patterson to the Transportation Advisory Board to complete an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2010, including an exception to the appointment policy residency provision. Do we have a motion?
Ten seconds.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. We have in our packet, which we've looked at already and reviewed, is an update on the Harrisburg Area Plan summary report documents. That information is also under the water cooler that we can access if we're off-site, I'll let everybody know. That's a plan that is going through, forward with several meetings. There was a meeting two weeks ago, I believe it was, and we have some upcoming meetings. I would encourage everybody to go to our website to look at the next meetings that are coming up, and to stay informed in that regard. And also, I would be remiss if I did not ask anybody in the community if they would be willing to serve on the different county boards and committees. We have quite a few. If you have access to the internet, please go to our website, www.kaberriscounty.us, under Commissioners, Boards, and Committees, that will help you to see the list, or you can contact us at 920-2109. With that, is there any comments from board members? Commissioner Poole.
Yes, I'd like to make two quick comments. First of all, I want to say in advance, Suzie Morris is going to come and talk to a group of students about zoning, and I appreciate the fact that county staff members are available to come and talk to students. It's a whole lot better to have, it actually is not my class, it's a different class. The teacher across the hallway asked me if I could help find her a guest speaker, so we're very appreciative in the schools when we have staff members who are willing to come out and spend time. I do think the high school students get it a little bit better when they have a guest speaker than just hearing from the same, from the same old teachers. I mean, they get to hear from people who actually are doing that, so thank you in advance. Also, for anyone listening, a reminder that on March 26th and 27th, at the Cabarrus Arena and Event Center, there is the FLW Tour. There are free giveaways, Family Fun Zone, Outdoor Expo, let's see, they're giving away an ATV and rod and reel giveaways, and it is free. The first 300 kids 14 and under get a rod and reel combo. It's on that Saturday. We have tickets, so for those of you at home that were not here in the audience tonight, you missed out, because I was able to give away about 100 of these tickets. What's important about tickets to a free event is for every one of these that are turned in, the county's charity fund gets a dollar donation. So I have more tickets to give away, I'm planning on giving these away tomorrow, and getting some more, since I gave out 100 tonight for the audience. So I presume that if people wanted them, they could come here and get tickets? Hate to put you on the spot, but...
There is a limited number of free tickets.
Okay, well, I've got some free tickets. Anybody that wants some that didn't get them already, check with us and see, and we'll be happy to give out the tickets. We want them to get in the hands of people that want to come out. It's supposed to be a whole lot of fun if you like fishing.
Anybody else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We're adjourned.